Thank you and welcome everyone to the Board of Alderman meeting. Uh, the first thing I'm going to do is going to ask you, if you're not speaking, please mute your mic. We do have quite a few people on here, which is great, but the feedback can be a little tough sometimes. Alright, so thank you everyone. Uh, and if you would, please me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Alright, so up first we have minutes of the previous meeting that was April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded to approve the meet, uh, minutes of the previous meeting. Is there any corrections, changes? And seeing none, would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we are on to outside the rail and up first we have Al Wakefield, Bob Harnish, Declaration of Inclusion, and this is page one of your packet. Um, Al or Bob, I don't know who wishes to speak first, but I will turn it over to one of you.
Thank you. Thank you. I, uh, this is, uh, this is Bob Harnish. I'm, uh, happy to be included in the meeting and, uh, and I know you have a busy schedule. I came to Vermont nearly sixty years ago for the outstanding skiing, uh, the Vermont Mystique and to purchase the Summit Lodge at Killington. We later bought Cortina Inn, which we ran for thirty-three years. My wife Brita served on numerous boards, including a term as President of the Rutland Chamber. And we have never wanted to live anywhere else but Rutland. So how is it that I came to be speaking here to you, uh, about something we call the Declaration of Inclusion? To explain, I need to go back to last summer. At the time of the death of Congressman John Lewis, there were video clips of demonstrations in the American South, including of the Bloody March over the Edmund Pettus Bridge in Selma. I began thinking, where was I during the sixties when all this was happening? Along with the marches and the unrest in the South. I was very happy in my white skin and my majority white population and trying to grow a business. It never occurred to me until much later that those marches were part of one of the great fundamental movements in our American culture. It was the great effort to nudge America closer to the ideal as expressed in our constitution, that all men are created equal and have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. So I called Al Wakefield and asked, what books should I be reading to better understand the experience? His experience of living life in these United States as a member of a minority, and especially as an African-American. Al and his daughter Shawna suggested several book titles, which I borrowed from the Pittsburgh Library and read, and then I read more. And then there was the murder of George Floyd, caught on videotape in all its awful detail, as we all know. And about that time, I was visiting with my cousin who was on the town of Franklin's Select Board. He told me that they had just adopted a Declaration of Inclusion and he gave me a copy. He said the town didn't not have a, trying to correct, but rather the Select Board, struggling with population stagnation in the town and lack of economic vitality, vitality, wanted the town to issue a broad statement to the world at large that Franklin would welcome all people regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, et cetera. Back in my hometown of Pittsburgh, I began thinking of how I might present this to the Select Board. I presented it at one meeting and then spoke about it at a subsequent meeting and answered questions. I pointed out that this was not in response to a problem, but that if we were successful in attracting new residents, it could contribute to revitalizing the town center, increase badly needed tax dollars and add to the dynamics of the town. There is no downside. After some questions, a motion was made to adopt the declaration and it passed unanimously. Since then, six other towns have adopted the declaration. Those towns are Brandon, Waterbury, Moretown, Middlebury, Pittsfield, and Woodstock Village, in addition to Franklin. To the best of my knowledge, no towns have voted against adopting it. We are actively working with Woodstock Town, Randolph, Bristol, Manchester, Bennington, Brattleboro, Chester, Springfield, and Norwich. And Burlington is high on our list. So that is where we are at the moment in our effort to have Vermont towns adopt a Declaration of Inclusion. For more on the thinking and rationale behind Vermont becoming a more inclusive state, we have our next speaker. But first I want to introduce two other members of our team. Liz DeMarco Weinman, a forty-year-old, I'm sorry, a forty-year member of our community, a consultant who can work remotely from anywhere in the world, but chooses Rutland. Norman Cohen, retired lawyer, longtime member of our Rutland community, who has a love of sports and a gift for the complex world of the law. And now I'd like to turn it over to the fourth member of our team, Al Wakefield.
I thought for a moment Liz was going to be forty years of age and I was going to commend her on how well she's, she's carried that off. We do have a kid, we do have a kid on our team, you see. Bob reminded me in mentioning, um, uh, John Lewis that in fact, uh, I and my family, uh, had come across the Pettus Avenue Bridge a week, uh, after Martin Luther King, uh, uh, marched across that bridge and stopped at a Dairy Queen, which was on the east side, the southeast side of that bridge and, uh, uh, tried to get, uh, a milkshake and a hamburger and was shot at and stoned at and, uh, essentially run out of, uh, out of town, uh, seeking refuge at an air force base uh, about ten miles, uh, outside of town. So that, that, um, I had my own personal experience with, uh, with the Martin Luther King, uh, John Lewis, uh, at Allah, uh, trip across that, across that bridge. Um, it also reminded me that when I arrived at, um, in Rutland now thirty, uh, thirty-three, thirty-four years ago or so and bought Ernie Royals', uh, Restaurant and Gourmet Food Market, that some people thought that, uh, I was a drug dealer and other people thought that maybe I was an FBI agent. Uh, maybe there's some simpaticalness between the two, I'm not sure. But I, this is not apocryphal, I got this directly from one of the two agents that used to spend time, uh, in my restaurant. Uh, um, uh, I presume watching what we were doing and how we were running the business. You know, that notwithstanding, I recall also how Ernie came to, uh, Rutland and, uh, most of you, uh, who've been around will certainly remember Royals' Harse Side and Royals' Market. And, uh, you know, Ernie's legacy, Ernie was, uh, was invited here by a group of business people, local business people, uh, having sampled his, uh, his food down in Springfield and said, we eat that in Rutland, we need, we need a great restaurant in Rutland. So Ernie came here and in fact built a great restaurant, a Michelin one star out of three-star restaurants, one of, one of the greatest in, in the world and put Rutland on the map for being, for having, uh, a great, uh, food quality, uh, uh, business here at the most prominent corner in, uh, in, in Rutland, four and seven, right? Uh, my family and I subsequently bought Royals and, uh, we, we managed to tear apart every piece of reputation that Ernie had. Uh, but we had a lot of fun in, uh, in trying to run that business and decided after a couple of years that business was not for us. But the legacy of, of Ernie still, uh, remains and in fact, as you all know, there's going to be a sculpture done of him, uh, put inside, uh, I'm not sure exactly where it's going to go, it should be ready in about a year or so, recognizing, uh, his contributions, uh, to Rutland. You all know the background on Ernie, so I, and what he achieved for Rutland, uh, as well as for himself. He was far hand-willow for, were far secondary, uh, to that. Ernie built, you know, what I, I would guess would have been over the course of thirty years at a couple of, you know, million a year, an eighty, eighty million dollar business in Rutland. Um, um, after leaving, uh, selling off, selling that business, both those businesses off, Royals' Harse Side and Royals' Market, uh, I created my own executive search firm, having come from being a partner with a very large executive search firm, in fact, the world's largest in New York, uh, seeing, seeing if I could duplicate that in, in Rutland. And I did not duplicate the world's largest up here. We had a very successful business. Uh, partner and I in New York, we generated between the two of us some three to four million dollars, uh, a year. A part of that was here in Rutland and in Rutland we, uh, employed, uh, four or five people or so, well, a couple of whom made over a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, you know, we added to the business community and certainly added to the earned income, uh, of, of people living, uh, living in, and here, uh, being residents of, uh, of Rutland. We've seen Rutland go through some changes, uh, over the year. I remember nineteen, I think it was ninety-eight when Mayor Winberg, uh, oversaw the development of downtown Rutland and Rutland was bustling. Uh, what's downtown right now is a fair shell of, of that. Uh, but I, I really do think that can be re-achieved. Over the weekend, my wife and I, um, uh, went up to Moretown, which is one of the companies that has approved, uh, the Declaration of, of Inclusion, went through Moretown, went through Warren, you know, on, on Route, uh, Route one hundred, uh, up and, uh, uh, also went through, yeah, Warren I mentioned. And, and got to Monpelia to have dinner on, on the way back. And, and the interesting thing is those towns were bustling with activity. In fact, I, I saw my first traffic jam in Monpelia. I haven't been in a traffic jam in a couple of, three years ago, but cars were, were back to back. And so far as I could see, there was nothing that was obvious that was happening, except that it felt good being in downtown, uh, Monpelia. Somebody thought Monpelia had some magic. The week prior to that, I had walked down, uh, Senator's and Nurtains Row. And I counted about five minutes, uh, on a Saturday afternoon, about six cars and about four people. Uh, Rutland is no less interesting than Monpelia and certainly not than Warren or Moretown. Uh, our buildings are just as pretty. We've got, uh, artifices, edifices rather, and buildings and, and so forth that are just as attractive. Our parks are just as lovely. Our markets are just as plentiful with a variety of goods. Our restaurants are just as plentiful and just as good. And our people are just as smart, but Rutland is nowhere near as busy. And so without, you've read the DOI as, as, uh, as been forwarded to you, no point in me going over that again, except to say that, you know, our vision is that the Declaration of Independence, uh, uh, Inclusion rather, is, is really a challenge to move Rutland forward, to embrace and promote change, to put in motion plans and strategies, which could be the model of what the future looks like, as opposed to a memory of a past that lingers on. Thank you.
Thank you, Al, and thank you, Bob. Um, I believe we actually have Lyle Jepson on to speak to this.
Thank you, Matt. Can you hear me okay? Great. Well, thank you. And again, I'm Lyle Jepson, the Executive Director of the Chamber in Economic Development here in the Rutland region. Uh, I want to thank you for the time tonight. Um, obviously this is an important issue. On April twentieth, the Chamber and Economic Development Board of Directors unanimously approved a resolution that directed me to establish a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee that will be charged with, but not limited to, the development of a DEI strategic plan. The resolution requires the plan to include education, projects, and activities to address bias, racism, and discrimination, as well as increased diversity, equity, and inclusion throughout the Cedar organization and entire Rutland region. The resolution also directs me to, to develop strategies that increase the understanding of systemic racism, equity, access to opportunity, diversity, and inclusion among our Cedar staff, board members, communities, and members. To this end, three specific action steps have been undertaken to this point. One is, we've engaged with a professional DEI consultant who will help us in guiding our work. The second is, we've developed and, uh, scheduled training sessions for our Cedar staff and Cedar board members. And third, we have a Diversity and Equity and Inclusion Committee that's been formed with the task of creating a strategic plan for our organization. So why are we doing this? We, we are disturbed, quite frankly, by recent national and local events related to racism. We can no longer remain silent and must in fact speak out to condemn discrimination of all kinds and embrace diversity in our communities. We need to look no further than our Cedar mission, which is to support our businesses, our communities, and our families in a way that will allow each to grow and prosper. Rutland City in particular has been a leader in supporting our, our signature project, which is the Regional Marketing Initiative. That project attracts new families to our county. And that initiative relies on the region being the most welcoming place for families to live, work, and play. Our businesses will tell you they need employees and they need them right now. So frankly, the work we are undertaking makes economic sense. But more importantly, it's the right thing to do. We've got a social and moral obligation to lead. It is what we consider our essential journey for our region and our state. We hope that the Board of Aldermen and each of you on the screen tonight and people who are listening in as individuals will embrace the opportunity to join in this effort. And I want to applaud, applaud Al and the forty-year-old Liz and Bob. And I'm missing your fourth member who is, help me, Al.
Norman Cohen.
Norm, thank you. Sorry, Norm. So, thank you for your efforts and the work you're doing around the state and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Lyle. And I believe we have one more speaker related to this and that would be Kim Roop.
Yes, thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for, um, allowing me to speak for a few minutes this evening. My name is Kim Roop and I serve as current President of the Rutland Young Professionals. I'm a fourth-generation native Vermonter, a graduate of College of St. Joseph and hold a Master's in Business Administration from Pittsburgh State University. I was born here, raised here, and have built a life here. You may recall that the Rutland Young Professionals released a statement in September of twenty twenty, sharing our commitment to making the Rutland region a great place to work, live, learn, and play. We are committed to doing our part to ensure that everyone, especially our BIPOC friends, colleagues, and members, feel comfortable and safe in our community. We feel strongly in supporting this statewide effort of the Declaration of Inclusion to be adopted by all towns and cities across Vermont. Our Board of Directors supports this work and is committed to building awareness and acceptance for this initiative among young professionals across Rutland County and beyond by becoming allies, advocates, and ambassadors for this cause. Our mission is to engage with our community, create social and professional networking opportunities, and work to build a Rutland area that attracts and retains young professionals. By supporting this thoughtful and necessary effort, we are continuing, continuing to provide welcoming opportunities for all young professionals in our community of different races, ethnicities, genders, religions, sexual orientations, political affiliations, and more. Our Board of Directors wholeheartedly supports this effort to become a more welcoming state, build our economy, and being kind-hearted individuals. I thank you all for your time and thoughtful work and encourage the city of Rutland to support this work and being the first city in Vermont to do so. Thank you.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you, Kim. I will now turn it over to any member of the board who has a question of any of the speakers or a comment.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and it has been seconded, suspend the rules. Would all those in favor of suspending the rules please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And along with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the, uh, we authorize the Board President to sign this, but if the makers of this, uh, DOI would allow it, I think it'd be really nice if each member of the board could, uh, stop by the clerk's office and sign it personally. I wouldn't mind my name being signed to this, so it's up to them. If they want just a, a signature from the President of the Board, then that's good with me, but it, 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 it wouldn't bother me to be also a, a signer as a member, so I guess the motion would be to authorize the, the President of the Board to sign it.
Second.
We have a motion to authorize, uh, the Board President to sign the City of Rutland Declaration of Inclusion and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate?
So, yes, uh, Al or Bob, do you guys mind? Do you want just the President's signature on there? Or do you want all the members? It would just take us some time because we'd have to stop by the clerk's office to sign it.
Bob, why don't you go ahead and speak for all of us?
Well, um, I thi- I think we'd be quite happy with, with Matt's signature, but anyway. Yep.
Okay, if you're happy with that, that's fine with me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, Bob.
I'd just like to add to that, um, it, it certainly is, it would certainly show just a lot of goodwill and a lot of support and convey to Rutland that everybody, uh, as a member of the Board were, was on board. And so we leave it up to, uh, up to you, but I think the more people, uh, that, that blatantly indicate their support, uh, the, the, the better. So I'm not contradicting Bob, I'm just saying that I think if all of you folks could sign it, that would be, uh, I, I think that would say something even bigger to the community.
Well, I would amend the motion and if you're okay, Alan, you're not in a hurry, as we would make the motion or amend the motion to be, to be signed by the Board President, all members of the Board and the Mayor, and present it to you when, when it's completed. If, if that's okay with you and the members and the maker, and the, the seconder agrees.
That would be very nice, Sam. We appreciate that.
I'm good with that. The seconder, okay?
Seconder's okay with that? Okay, so we have a, a motion and it has been amended to include not just the Board President's signature, but all members of the Board as well as the Mayor.
And the Mayor. Yep.
And the
Yeah, thank you. And if the Mayor could chime in, because I heard my name, I just want to say, um, thank you to the two gentlemen, or, well, to the, um, three or four, uh, representatives that have come before us tonight. Um, I would be, um, proud and happy to include my name on, uh, that, on the Declaration of Inclusion. Um, be very, um, proud to be able to, uh, tell my fellow uh, Mayors of the other cities here in the, uh, state of Vermont that we are the first to do so. And, um, I, um, I wholeheartedly, uh, support what they're trying to do and getting their message out across the state, so, uh, thanks for coming and, um, and I'm happy to be part of it. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mayor Laire. Alright, so we have a motion that has been amended and it's been seconded to have the Declaration of Inclusion with City of Rutland to be signed by the Board President, the Mayor, and the full Board of Aldermen. Is there any further discussion, debate, or questions? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Nice presentation, folks.
Thanks very much. We, we very, very much appreciate it, yeah. Uh, it's a good sign. It's a good sign. I like, like, Rutland being, uh, being the leader. Feels good. Yeah.
It was nice to see my mature crowd show up for this. It was kind of nice to see you two there.
Excellent. Well, well, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you for all being here. I, I will pause for just a moment for anyone who may have just been on for this, who doesn't wish to stick with us for the rest of the meeting, if you want to log off. Of course, you're welcome to be with us, but otherwise have an excellent evening. And with that, we are still outside the rail. Is there anyone else outside the rail who wish to address the Board on, on the agenda? Certainly nothing, so I will move us on to communications from the Mayor, Mayor Laire.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I do have, uh, Mr. President, I have two, uh, issues I wanted to address, uh, tonight. Um, fairly quickly, um, just to run down, um, the situation down at the Quality Inn. Um, the city continues to receive, um, the same correspondence from the state regarding their plan for the homeless hotel program, which of course includes the Quality Inn. Um, their plan is that by July first, new criteria will be in place for qualifying individuals and families for the program. That, in their estimation, would decrease the population at the hotels by thirty percent. But, and this is a big but, still no concrete actions to address the crisis at these hotels in the short term, in my view. And really not, um, any long-term, um, actions either. No increase in security, no list to tell us who's in the hotels, uh, no holding the owners' feet to the fire for health and safety violations. So with all of that, I continue to be quite frustrated at the, uh, lack of concrete, concrete responses, uh, from the state. It looks like, uh, the response, their responsibilities have been dumped on the backs of your local government once again, and that's, um, in this case, the City of Rutland. I have, uh, instructed our health officer, um, Mike Brookman, to go down and do an inspection of the facility. And once I have that report, which should be in the next couple of days, I'm going to be ready to take some action to relieve the pressure on the adjacent businesses and homeowners in that section of the city and really for all of us here in the whole city. So that's where we stand. Talked to the police chief today. Uh, he's had a couple of more meetings with, uh, um, both the providers and state officials and he is feeling about the same a- as I am about the whole situation. So I hope to have some more information in the, in the very short term on that issue. So that's the first thing. The second thing, um, I wanted to, and I think I mentioned it briefly earlier, or somebody asked a question where, where, as we were getting started at the meeting about some, um, starting meetings in person. Um, last Thursday, I held my first department head meeting, uh, in the chambers. Um, uh, socially-distanced, vast, uh, there was, there was, um, you know, everyone was, just about everyone was present. Uh, it went very well. Um, I felt comfortable. I think everybody else felt comfortable. Um, there had been some new guidelines that had been, uh, set down from the state. Uh, they released them, uh, at Friday's, um, meeting that the state had. And, uh, one excerpt, uh, expressly, um, spoke to meetings of public bodies. Um, and I'm going to, uh, just, uh, word by word, um, recite what I read, um, in the, um, Rutland Herald that was reported by Eric Blaisdell in Saturday's paper. And if, uh, you could let me, uh, go through this very quickly. Um, the state reached sixty percent of this, uh, the state's eligible population with at least one dose of the vaccine. That's a milestone the governor's administration set in order to move to the next phase of reopening. State needed to hit that number by the first of May and did so on the twenty-eighth of April. The first step of the quote-unquote Vermont Forward Plan saw outdoor businesses, retail establishments, businesses with lower, no contact with the public, and lodging, campgrounds, and other accommodations move to a universal guidance from the state. That was on April ninth. That guidance asked public, or asked businesses to follow five rules. These five rules are for universal guidance. Stay home of sick, wear a mask, ensure six-foot spaces in uncrowded places, practice good hygiene, and travel safely. This is the part that I would like to, um, really hone in on. Public Safety Commissioner Mike Scherling said Saturday, said, "Starting Saturday, the universal guidance extends to most, uh, most other businesses, including those in construction and hospitality and where there is close contact with the public." Scherling said the guidance also applies to places of worship, sports leagues, meetings of public bodies, and entertainment venues. And then there's a couple of more, uh, paragraphs that I won't go into. But, uh, I think very clearly that not only is the state loosening things up, but they have expressed That not only is the state loosening things up, but they have expressly, uh, talked about. Um, meetings of public bodies, which is something that I had not seen. So, um, I'm feeling much more comfortable about the possibility and hopefully the likelihood. That this group and, um, others in, uh, city government will feel comfortable beginning to meet. Uh, in person, hopefully, uh, at at your next meeting. I know that you have sent, uh. This issue to committee. Um, I don't believe there's been a meeting on it yet, but, um, what I would like to recommend. From my vantage point, that is that not only am I feeling comfortable, and I think my department heads are feeling comfortable. That it's time to, uh, time to get us together i- in the same room. Uh, the last couple of meetings, you've had a lot of background noise. It's been difficult to conduct a business. I mean, we've been doing it for a year. But it's just getting harder and harder, and I think it's time for this group and for all of us to be back together again, um, meeting in person. So I'd like to, uh, recommend that to you. Um, it's entirely up to you when you would like to start that. It's your meeting. But, um, from my vantage point, I think that, uh, we're ready at City Hall. So that's what I have.
Thank you, Mayor Lair. Uh, Alderman DePoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm the one that made the motion for us to start meeting again in person, um. In speaking with a couple of the members of the board, though, I think that this still should go to committee because. We need to figure out exactly how we're going to do it, because there may be some members and there may be some people of the public. Who are not ready to go into that setting. And I'd like to have a hybrid type of, um, program set up where people can still, uh, testify, bring things before the board if they'd like. Comment on, um, whatever subject that we might be talking about, but be able to do it remotely. Um, so, you know, and to be quite honest with you, I wouldn't be able to be here tonight at this meeting. Um, as I'm over in New York and. I think it would be good for members and and we need to talk about this and figure out how we're going to do it, but if a member. If a member is not able to be in chambers, but can still attend the meeting, uh, remotely. We, I think that it's a a good idea, at least in the short term, so. Um, I still like to see this go to committee to, um, figure out how exactly. Uh, we can accomplish what I feel are some necessary components to going back to meeting in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. I have Alderman Davis, followed by Alderman Garusa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, I I think it's great that we get the opportunity to go back in the chambers and and have meetings and. Welcome the public. What I don't know is what. Um, based on, um, our square footage of the chambers, um, is there a limited number of people that can be there plus. The eleven of us with the clerk, the city attorney, the mayor, et cetera. Um, the other thing I don't know is, um. Uh, who. Uh, is there, is it different rules if some of us are vaccinated and some of us are not vaccinated? Um, um, so those are the kind of things I just think we need to be sure of, that we follow the guidance, and so. Um, you know, we folks back to the chamber, but they also know what the expectation is when they come in to either. Uh, sit and watch the board meeting or, um, participate in the board meeting, um, from outside the rail, so. Uh, I even, um, has been watching the guidance, but I think if we could get that, um. Clear, so we have that understanding one, and if that committee take meeting takes place, that would be helpful for me at least.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. Alderman Garusa.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and fellow members, I. I actually agree with Alderman Davis and and Alderman DePoy and and your guys of Fall Over, even the city attorney, um. There's a lot of great stuff in our packet tonight. Um, about the new Roberts Rules of Order and dealing with the, if you if you don't mind, the electronic meetings, whatever. And when we got to those, I was considering earlier asking you guys if we should. Look into a joint like charter in ordinance or 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 general committee meeting because. That would cut somewhat. Tom's right. I mean, even look at. Almost perpetually changing our meetings, that if you can't make it to a meeting, you could sign on. If you're on vacation or something and you need your quorum or or whatever. I mean, I know we've done that a hundred years ago when I was on the the bus board or. Whatever, we could sign in just to help get something done, but there's some pretty good stuff. I don't know if you've seen your packet, Tom, uh. There's some pretty good stuff, and then Alderman Davis is really right, too. If a hundred people show up in that chamber, we're in trouble. Um, social distancing and all that. I've I've been vaccinated for both vaccinations. Um, I should be good, but there are a lot of people that haven't, and then I guess there's a risk that we could be carriers without getting it ourselves, so. I don't know all the nuts and bolts of that, but it's a lot of, a lot of moving parts to this, and I'd like to. You know, to see us get together and or and maybe even. I don't know, a committee of the whole or something, because he really, the city attorney really gave us some interesting things to look at. And maybe change the whole scope of the future meetings for us. There's a lot of new stuff on the table here. Um, how we could do this, uh, for members who can't make it and, um, you know, like take a snowstorm. I was thinking about that today. You get a major, major blizzard. We could still have a meeting and, uh, have it have it virtually and, uh. And not have to go out and dig our cars out of the snow like we did in the old days, but. Um, I I you gotta look at the stuff in the packet. There's some really interesting stuff here. And and I'm not shy. I'm not camera shy. I'm, I'll meet next week if you want. I'll meet tonight if you want in front of a camera, but. Putting the two together is a great idea and a great opportunity, and I think something, I think the answer's right here in our packet tonight, so that's what I wanted to just throw that out to you to. Really, I don't think we could, we could consume it all tonight. That's something we gotta look at and bring to committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Garusa. Are there any further comments, questions? All right, if if not, uh, the question of meeting in person is in committee right now. Then, as Alderman Garusa stated, we will be coming upon, uh, some new Roberts rules that we will be considering as well.
Um, uh, President, if I may speak from, um, the rack, can you hear me? Okay, so what I was, um, I may not be able to make the committee meeting, but, um, the gym would be a possibility to put the bleachers out. Um, to do some trial. I believe that our internet will be full force, um, very soon, so. Just in case I'm not able to make it, that could be something that could be a start. Um, you know, you know, getting set up and keep storing the desk there. We would be more than open to accommodate that. Um, you know, for the next three, six months, whatever it takes. So just in case I'm not there, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thanks very much, Kim. Is there any other questions, feedback? Pertain to this or for the mayor in general?
So if I could just respond, I appreciate, um, the comments from the, uh, members of the board. I don't disagree with any of them. Um, I was hoping that I might be able to spur along the conversation by bringing this up tonight and encouraging you to. To have that meeting. I'm not sure which committee it is in, but, um, I think it's i- important to get the discussion started. Um, because there are, uh, there are a couple of, uh, components to that. Um, not the least of which, and I think I've brought up before, is the is the public, but, um, I think it can be accommodated. And, um, and thought through in a, in a, in a very thoughtful way. And again, to get us to the to the goal of having us back in person, which I think would, uh, facilitate. These meetings in a lot of different ways, uh, not the least of which is all being back, looking each other eye to eye and being able to, um. Um, chat before and after meetings, and, um, I think it would just make for, uh, for better, uh, for better governing. But I appreciate the comments and I look forward to working with you all on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Lair.
Yep.
All right, if there's nothing else for Mayor Lair. We will move on to additions and deletions to the agenda. I don't believe we have anything. The only thing I will note is that I will move Susan Schreman and Paul Gallo up. Before reports and letters from department heads and officials, so that they can present and then depart afterward if they would like. So with no addition, uh, additions and deletions to the agenda, uh, Susan, Paul, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um. We wanted to come tonight before you to address a few things, to update you on the path for the new members of the board. Who haven't been down to Rutland Creek Path. Um, but I'm going to start with the first item that is the Joint Youth Agreement with Green Mountain Power. That is part of the right-of-way process that is required. Um, we we signed an agreement, a similar agreement. With Green Mountain Power on a previous segment, segment four, and the city attorney has reviewed this agreement. For signature by the, um, mayor. And so that is in your packet for your signature so that we can move forward on the path. Um, I didn't know if anyone had any questions about it. Okay, um, hearing none, I'll move on, um. For those of you who are new on the board, um, and if you haven't been down to Rutland Creek Path, we hope you will take the time and go there. The path is, um, has been in the works for probably fifteen years, Paul, I think. Um, we have completed, um, construction of three segments. The path is divided into five segments. Um, and segments one, two and four are completed and, um. Segment five, which goes out to the former College of St. Joe and the rec, um, is. Has preliminary, um, plans underway, but we shifted gears a couple of years ago. And decided that we needed to move forward on segment three, which goes from West Street to Meadow Street Park. It includes a new pedestrian bridge over East Creek, about a hundred and forty-five foot long bridge. The segment is, um, one thousand six hundred and twenty-five feet and it will connect. Um, from segment two to segment four, which will. Be huge in in the process of getting a a complete path in place. Right now, um. We are in the right-of-way phase with. The way Vtrans grants work is there's preliminary engineering, then you go to right-of-way. And then you go to final engineering and construction. So we've completed, um, preliminary engineering on segment three. And we're currently in the right-of-way phase. We, um. Will need one easement from Green Mountain Power. The path, um. And you can see from the map in your packet goes from West Street. It extends down west on West Street and crosses mid-block. Across from Green Mountain Power's parcel and then goes under the power line. With a new pedestrian bridge and lands at the northwest corner of Meadow Street Park, where it will go along the edge of the berm. By the creek. You won't be able to see the creek, but from there it will continue and meet up with segment four. Um. We just received, uh, another three hundred thousand. We were successful in getting that grant in government funds. Um, and have been informed, I was informed by Vtrans. Last week that, um. They no longer will require us to come up with cash matches for segment three. We can use all in-kind materials. Um, they they said Rutland is one of the few, if not the only place that is doing in-kind. And we've been very successful in getting the community to support this and give materials. And, um, so that is huge. We we continue to raise cash, but, um, and and the. Match for in-kind can only be used for construction, so for engineering or for, um. Any legal fees or anything like that, we'd have to use the cash that we've been raising, but otherwise we will, um. We will try to use in-kind. We were successful in segment four to use only in-kind and no cash for the construction. So, um, with that, I'm going to let Paul continue on to describe some of the, um. Properties.
Well, I just want to dovetail on Susan's comments with reference to the state recognizing us for. In-kind donation, which is very unique for these funds. And doesn't it sound like Rutland, we find a way to get things done? So, uh, that being said, I I don't think we'll have. The in-kind will not fulfill the pledge alone, so we we've got. Quite a large amount of, uh, cash storage, uh, that we protect, wholeheartedly protect. Um, we are working with some in-kind pledge holders. Uh, I wanted to talk about the Suburban, uh. Propane property, which is on the north side as well as the south side. Um, the north side, uh, runs about two hundred and ninety, uh, feet in, uh. Street frontage. It's the green fenced-in area on West Street. We all know that property. It has been through. A Phase One environmental assessment, um. However, it's going to need, um, it's going to need, and Tara will talk about it in a minute here. We do need more, uh. And studies done there, uh, which our PATH money will fulfill, uh, in our in our coffers, um. The south side, uh, they own a, Suburban owns a parcel on the south side, just across the street. Next to the hair salon, um. Suburban is, you know, we've been in conversation with them for four or five years. They are willing to donate these two properties, these two pieces, these two parcels. However, there is going to be an an environmental assessment, Phase One environmental assessment to the Southern law. So we were, we're going to be asking the city to pick up the tab on that. Knowing, um, we, it's not part of the the PATH project, however, it's donated to the city. Which I assume will be flipped back to the, uh, private sector by the city, I can only assume. So, um, we'll be looking for the city to pick up the tab on that Phase One environmental study. Um, full disclosure, my aunt and uncle, uh, Pete, Peter Abatell and his wife Phyllis. They own that property when it was People's Fuel. I'm pretty familiar with that property across the street. Um, back in the late fifties, early sixties, they purchased a house there, knocked it down and used it for employee parking. So it had really nothing to do with the fuel business other than employee parking. Um. So I'm assuming everything will go fine there for the city. Um, and that's about it. Um, we're really excited to move forward with this. We really want to have you sort of help us drive the train by getting through. This, 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 uh, environmental study, so Suburban is taken care of and we can go on with final engineering. Thank you. And Tara, maybe you can explain the program that.
Yes.
And in and all of that.
Okay. So, um, as Paul mentioned, the Suburban propane. Property on the north side of West Street already had, uh, quite a lot of environmental, um, investigation done on it. And that was back at the point where they were taking the fuel tanks out. There are basically, um. On record, a full spectrum of assessment that was done that identified that. There was some contamination from the GE plant that had gotten onto that site and through the groundwater. And there was some contamination, petroleum-based contamination in the soil. Um, and the state's process, they issued a sites management activity complete, which is essentially a letter that said. Um, this this property is, we we have a fair idea of what's going on here. If you put a two, uh, foot cap of soil on this and do not disturb that cap, um, then you're in good shape. But if you go any lower than that two feet, um, you'd have to, uh, we reopen the investigation and have to take a further look at what's happening. The path, um, is not going to go any deeper than two feet. That's the current engineering plans that I've been able to look at. And so, um, there shouldn't be any issue with that. The reason it needs a Phase One assessment at this point in time is really so that. Um, the city can be assured that we can get into something called the Brella Program, and I believe that some of you may be familiar with this because it's something that we did recently with the City of St. Joseph, um. Property with the gym property. So, um. With all commercial property transactions, there is always some possibility of becoming part of a liability chain. unless you've done something called a phase one investigation assessment and, um, and enrolled in the Brella Program. So this is a prime, I, you know, in conversations with state, um, A and R, uh, this is a prime opportunity for that to occur. So like I said, it's been fully characterized. The phase one is just an update to say, has anything happened on the property since that point? And to look at the records. And then there's a, um, a, a application that gets filled out to enroll in the Brella. The Brella then kind of puts a cap on, like a separation, a barrier, if you will, between the city and any liability that might be associated with, um, contamination. So say something advances in the future, there's, uh, something that's unknown there that was caused prior to the city's ownership. Um, it would put a barrier between the city and, and that liability. So that's, uh, that's the point of getting into the Brella Program is really to, um, provide the city with that level of, um, assurance that we're not inheriting something that, um, is gonna be a problem for the future. The same for the south side. So the south side, it makes sense, even though we don't think there'll be any contamination, the fact that we're buying, or not buying, but maybe accepting the donation of a land, um, that's within a commercial corridor. It's a good idea to do that phase one assessment and enroll it in the Brella Program for the very same reason. So if there is something that shows up later, um, the city's not taking any responsibility for that, unless it's something that's caused by the city during the time it owns it. So that's, uh, um, the basics of, uh, why a phase one assessment is, a new phase one assessment is needed on the north side parcel, which the grants are gonna pay for through the bike path program because the bike path is actually crossing that property, and why a phase one assessment would be needed for the southern property. It's because Suburban is saying, yeah, we'll donate, but you have to take both properties. So if the city, um, agrees and we take both properties, um, the southern property is of no use to the bike path program. So we could enroll it into the city-owned properties program and see if there's private sector interest in it. Um, so the, I think it's a thirty-five-hundred-dollar assessment, Susan? I think that was the number we were talking about, that you've gotten from the engineers. Um, for that thirty-five-hundred dollars, i- if this all goes through the, you know, the way that we're talking about it here, um, and you did put it into the city-owned properties program, then maybe at least some, if not all of that money would be made back, um, in the course of selling the property because unless the city has some use for keeping it, which at this point is not identified. So that's a long explanation, but wanted to, uh, sort of put it in context and, and, um, prepare you all for, um, asking any questions and sort of wrapping your heads around, around how this works.
Thank you, Tara. Alderman Gillum.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm very much in favor of this project, and I want to explain why we need the Agway property. Um, if you guys know the rivers or the West Street Bridge, there's a hump there. Um, we need to move it so people can see people crossing over from both directions, and that's why they've moved it more west from the bridge for a safety reason. Plus, we moved it away from the sidewalk. If you look on your packet on page forty-six, it really spells out how that piece is gonna work. It's very important to the project. It's also a very big safety issue for bikers and walkers to cross West Street safely. We'll have the blinking lights there also. So I was a, I was at the, uh, engineering, uh, presentation at Meadow Street last year, and I think that's a wonderful idea to do that, and I didn't expect Agway to donate it. So this is a bonus, um, because the property's already got a nice, uh, grass and everything there. Um, and it's also far back from the sidewalk and from the road, so the safety issues will be taken care of in that level. Um, Mr. Pres- Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, suspend the rules and take up the Green Mountain piece, if I may.
Can we have a second? All right, so we have a motion that has been seconded. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, motion passes. Alderman Gillum.
I'd like to, uh, approve the Green Mountain, uh, agreement with the City of Rutland for the bike path, and I still move.
Second.
Second.
And I believe there's some signatures required on the bottom, but I don't have it in front of me. I need to move up.
Mayor.
Is it the mayor? Thank you. Approve the mayor to sign. Thank you.
Very good. So we have a motion that has been seconded to authorize the mayor to sign the joint use agreement. Our, uh, hearing and seeing none, but all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 No opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I also like to make another motion. I'd like to move the Agway property, um, to, uh, a recreation, I would say. Is that, is this the bike path and the recreation deal? Yes, I'd like to move that to recreation, and we will review it and then pass it on to the board for the next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded to refer the Agway property to Recreation Committee for renewal. Are there any questions, discussion, debate? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 No opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a comment, if I may. Uh, this is very important to this neighborhood. Um, this is a start to renovate and to beautify the neighborhood. I'd like to put it on the table for discussion. Um, the Rotary Club over the weekend, uh, that Elizabeth and myself belong to, uh, did some cleanup on the bike paths, and we were amazed to see the amount of trash coming out of there in the Spur Street bike path. Uh, so it was a major discussion that day that the Rotary Club should probably adopt the path and will be responsible for cleaning it up twice a year. So we would take care of it because obviously it needs to be taken care of, and it would save the taxpayers some money here. So, uh, um, um, oh, I'm getting a bloody nose. Um, so that, um, uh, Kim's department doesn't have to worry about it. So it'll be ready to mow when, in the spring when she needs to take care of it. So, and we're gonna bring that to the Rotary Club for discussion and bring it back on their decision in the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Are there any other comments, questions? Uh, Susan?
Yes, I, I would just ask that the, um, in order for the, um, the path project to keep moving forward, um, these phase one assessments need to be done, um, as soon as possible because the, um, appraiser then needs to provide appraisal for, um, for the northern parcel for the path, and Suburban is paying the same appraiser to do the appraisal for the southern parcel. So I would just ask that the Recreation Committee, um, if you could meet sooner rather than later so that we can get this underway, um, as soon as possible to keep the project moving. We're, we are aiming for just, um, getting the final plan, the right, through the right-of-way process, and ho- hoping that we could get this project out to bid, um, early fall and give the contractor some leeway so whether they could start in the late fall and, um, early spring. We've found that that, um, our pricing for the construction contract come in better that way. So I, I'm really trying to keep everything moving. Um, and while the right-of-way plans are being reviewed right now, the appraiser can't get out there. But as soon as he gets the right-of-way plan back, he can get out there and do the appraisal, but he needs the phase one. So, um, I'm just trying to keep everything moving as fast as possible, um, to get us to construction. So, um, my only request was that if Recreation Committee could meet sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And Alderman Deploy is on here, and I know if you heard that, so we will get that scheduled. Is there any other questions, comments, discussion? Uh, Kim, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, thank Susan and Paul for all their effort in the Creek Pass. Um, I know Devin and I had a conversation today. Um, Susan and Paul, it was probably one of my first meetings when I came on board four years ago along with Tom Deploy and talking about this Creek Pass. So I just want to thank them for including the rec in the plans. That's been extremely helpful, and thank you to Bill Gillum, who has recognized the, you know, unfortunately, it does, um, accumulate trash, and we send volunteer groups out there, but it's just not enough. We need a little bit more supervision. Um, I, again, this is going to be great. We are super excited about the, um, having phase three done to connect four, two, and one, and then five. But the amount of work Susan and Paul, just thank you so much for everything. I think this is going to really enhance recreation specifically and many others. So, so again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Kim. Any further discussion, debate, comments? Hearing none, Susan and Paul, thank you very much for being with us. Um, we will reach out and let you know as soon as we get that Recreation Committee meeting scheduled. All right. So with that, we are moving on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Superintendent Peters, you have a handful of items, beginning with approval of selling maintenance assets, which is page two of your packet.
Thank you, and I'm coming to the board for the request of selling maintenance items that we will be giving to Sarah Magro to, um, disperse and put bids out.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 No opposed?
I'll, uh, I'm sorry. I'll move to authorize, uh, the sale or the disposal of the equipment enlisted, um, and presented by the Recreation Superintendent.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded to either sell or dispose of the recreation equipment outlined by Superintendent Peters.
So, if I may.
Yep. You got muted, Sharon.
I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, so the question would be to Kim or Mary, uh, in regards to if they are sold, the money to be returned to where?
The, uh, maintenance line item. I, I don't have the formal name, I'm sorry.
That's fine. So I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, if that's part of the motion, that they, if there is a sale of, of any of the equipment, um, that the money would be returned to the maintenance line item of the Recreation Department.
And I, it's Mary. Can I just ask for clarification? I didn't get a chance to speak with Kim before. Were we going to, uh, Equipment Replacement Fund, Kim, or just offsetting our general, um, operating budget?
Sorry, Equipment Replacement. Thank you, Mary, for the wording.
Okay.
So I'll adjust my motion, Mr. Chairman, to reflect Equipment Replacement rather than Maintenance Line Item.
In a second, or is good with that? Yes, excellent.
Yeah.
So, perfect. So we have a motion that has been seconded to authorize the sale or disposal of the recreational items as outlined by Superintendent Peters and to return any money from the sales to the Equipment, uh, Fund of the Recreation Budget. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 No opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent Peters, you are up again for program updates, page three of your packet.
Thank you. Um, so I just think it's a great time to start announcing, you know, with, with the listening guidelines. We're back, you know? We, we've been here, but we're back, and we're really excited to announce, um, you know, I, I put a list there, but I think some of the, the noteworthy are summer concerts, city bands, uh, the pool opening, Foley. Um, and I think, um, even most importantly, I, we've already received calls on the Halloween Parade. So we plan on moving forward. Um, the sidelines look good for us. So look for information on that for July fourth. We've, we've also been able to begin opening our facilities, the Goddick Adult Center, which has been closed not just per our guidelines, but it's also, um, with the guidelines of adult centers. Um, April Choffee's been working extremely hard on getting our seniors back in, and it is, we, we started reopening last month. Um, all, all of our parks are open for rentals. We're getting calls and reservations every day. And, um, I, you know, I, I, I'm open for any questions or comments, but we're, we're working hard, we're following the guidelines, and we are really, um, we're really excited about spring and summer and reopening, and especially the Halloween Parade. So, um, thanks to everyone's patience, but, um, we're there. So any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer. Otherwise, I will move on.
Any questions for Superintendent Peters? I think you are good to move on to the next phase.
All right, thanks. Um, so with the opening of, um, the, of the rec center, we do need to rename the street that is a shared entranceway, which is right now known as Clement Road. Um, but per nine-one-one, and Tara Kelly's also on to explain that if there's any questions, but we're looking for the approval of the naming of, of the street to be, to be from Clement Road to Community Drive. And I ask for the suspension of the rule.
I'll spend, suspend the rules.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion to suspend, and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
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 No opposed? Motion carries.
So I, if I may, just a, um, question. Um, I'm glad to, uh, rename the street, but I'm gonna ask the city attorney, um, is that something that the board does or the Board of Highway does?
Um, I think for purposes of this approval, we were thinking for the E-nine-one-one, um, determination. But, uh, that's a good question as far as, um, uh, if, if, if we're adopting it as a city street. Um, and that, uh, we, I guess we have to make that, that determination of whether it's going to be considered a city street or whether we're just naming it so that, um, you know, nine-one-one personnel can find the, the building when they're directed. So I don't know, Tara, you may, you may understand the differentiation there better than I do, having done most of the E-nine-one-one work. Um, I don't know that we're adopting this as a, as an official city road.
So, yeah, I'd.
Given thought to it yet.
Yeah, I'd happy to wait, and, and Sharon, I appreciate the question. Um, I wanted to, um, so for E-nine-one-one purposes, we are naming just the private driveway that enters, uh, the property. And, um, because that is going to continue to be owned, like, part of that loop, um, is, remains on the land that is currently owned by the Heritage Family Credit Union, and part of the loop would be on the city, um, side of the, where the, you know, in front of the gymnasium. It's not really officially adopting the road as a road. That's not my understanding of what we're doing. I think we're just naming it, um, for the purposes of E-nine-one-one. E-nine-one-one says if you have more than one building, I think there was, they might actually say four buildings, but there's a number of buildings that if they're off of a road that, that extends back into a property more than a quarter mile, there's certain specifications like that that they use. They say you need to have a private road name assigned to it. I think that's what we're doing here, and Sharon, you're correct that when we first started E-nine-one-one, um, compliance, we were going to the Board of Highway, um, for the naming of, even of the private roads. I did, I don't know if that's the only way to go about it, so I don't want to step on, on that, on your toes in any way, but that is the way that we did it originally. And so, and I also want to clarify, we're not renaming the rest of Clement Road. So for anyone that's listening, and especially, uh, Gordon, I wouldn't want it to come across that this is a renaming of the entire length of Clement Road. It's rather creating a, a road name for the driveway that extends into the property, calling it Community Drive, and then the buildings that will be off of this so-called new. calling it Community Drive, and then the buildings that will be off of this so-called newly named Community Drive will have addresses assigned to them so that they can be put on a map for E nine one purposes, and there won't be, uh, a confusion in the future about which building is, um, making the call, and where a responder has to show up to. I don't know if that helped or confused, but I'm done with what I wanted to say.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair. Um, so I think, uh, based on that question, what may, what may make sense is if the board, um, is, is okay with voting tonight, and, and wasn't planning to send a committee or otherwise, or, or discuss a different name, it may be worthwhile to, um, almost provisionally, um, uh, approve that name pending the city attorney's review of, um, the Board of Highway's commissioner's role in the, um, in it. That way, if it turns out that, you know, it's, it was something that was just done, um, uh, because that was the group in the past that had more time to deal with kind of the, the larger, um, project of, of naming, and there's not technically, you know, they're not the ones with exclusive authority. I think what we were, what the thought was, at least for tonight, was that, um, you know, the board may have an opinion on, on the name, and, um, you know, rather than just a smaller group decide on, on what the name is, um, that we would at least, uh, you know, bring it to the board for their, for their blessing. So I think if, um, that, that may make, make the most sense for the board, again, to, if they're looking to do that, approve the, approve the name, um, Community Drive, pending the city attorney's, um, confirmation that it's within the board's authority to do so.
So moved.
We have a motion that has been seconded, Alderman Gruza.
Yeah, I, uh, uh, I don't know. I guess it's always me, but, uh, Community Drive sounds like something we said when we were broadcasting live, and when, when we started Stuff of Us, whatever, years ago. Um, I think Community Lane sounds more appropriate. Community Drive sounds like a great place to leave off food and donations. Um, I'm sorry, I'm in the word business, but, um, that's, that's just my opinion. He said, uh, Matt said we could talk about the name, but, uh, I do think they, uh, uh, I don't know, Community Drive or Recreation Drive if you wanted to, but, uh, uh, or Community Lane is something that I would throw out there, but, um, whatever. I guess it's not my, my choice, uh, whatever, uh, or the boards, I guess, or whatever. Everybody may be laughing at me, but I don't like it.
Thank you, Alderman Gruza. Um, is there any further discussion, debate, or questions? If not, we have a motion that has been seconded to provisionally accept the name of Community Drive, pending review by the city attorney. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. All right, Kim, I believe we have you up again with, uh, Pine Hill Park updates, page four of our package.
Yeah, thank you. I, I will be, um, introducing Shelley Lutz. Um, but I wanted to, to start this by stating that, um, again, another good news with some grants that we received, and we are able to announce today, um, for eighteen thousand dollars to, for some updates at Pine Hill. Um, Nikki Adams, one of our program directors, wrote the grant, um, to assist Pine Hill Partnership. And I was, uh, part of the workforce this past, uh, two weekends ago. We had over forty-five people helping clear trails. And again, I don't think Shelley needs, uh, a huge introduction, but her years of service and everything she does, um, for Pine Hill, um, and I'm going to let her talk a little bit about the, the one hundred years old, which I believe Gordon's going to be doing a story about. Um, so at this point, um, I wanted to turn this over to Shelley Lutz.
Thanks, Kim. Um, good evening, everybody, and just, yeah, Nikki was huge in writing this grant we received for eighteen thousand dollars from the Recreation Trail Program. Uh, it will pay for a three-week Vermont Youth Conservation Corps crew in the summer of twenty twenty-two, and will be putting in probably one of the last trails in the park. Uh, it'll be down towards Watkinswood Road in Milk Run, which was completed last year. Uh, it's exciting and glad to have V Y C C coming back to Rutland. But what's really exciting is the park is one hundred years old on May ninth. And, uh, if you want more information, our history page on pinehillpartnership.org has all the history of the park that we've been able to find over the years. And it was donated by Henry Carpenter, who actually was the owner of the Bardwell Hotel, and he was a prominent businessman, and he bought this property from Annie Pierpoint in nineteen twenty-one with the idea of it being, uh, Rutland's recreation space. So it's kind of evolved over the years, as many of you may know or may not know. And I really would encourage you to go to the website if you want to see some really nice stuff, um, that we were able to pull up from the Rutland Historical Society. And, uh, V P R, N P R came down and did a story on us, and they actually found an old movie video of the kids swimming up at Rocky Pond back in the fifties. So again, I would encourage you to do that. Uh, and just a reminder that we're all volunteers that, uh, build and maintain the trails in Pine Hill Park. And, uh, it's been pretty awesome the last, the last eighteen months here, or thirteen months of the pandemic, just to see the number of users using the park. And, uh, even on not so nice days, we had Star Wars characters there last Saturday, uh, with May the fourth be with you. So anyway, thanks very much. I won't keep you any longer with my ramblings, and, uh, thanks, Kim, for all the support over the years.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you, Shelley, thank you. Are there any questions? Alderman Davis.
Well, not a question, but just, um, to say thank you again to Shelley and her group for all, all of the work that they do at, um, Pine Hill Park. Um, the volunteerism, the many, many, many hours, um, and the great, uh, maintenance of these trails in that area, um, and certainly a cost, huge cost saving to the taxpayers. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Welcome, thanks very much, guys.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Davis. Any other questions, comments, feedback? All right, hearing none. We are on to Recreation Maintenance Director Peterson. This is approval of an agreement with G M P for three-phase electrical at the community center, pages five and six of the packet. Mr. Peterson, do we have you with us?
Yes, yes, I'm here. Uh, yeah, I mean, this is just basically a standard agreement with, uh, Green Mountain Power. Just to give you a little bit of history, I know we chatted about this a while ago. Uh, but the power lines and stuff, there was some confusion as far as we wanted to separate them from the rest of the campus. And, uh, we have been able to do that as far as searching the lines. My crew's been working on them for the last couple of weeks. Uh, we've been working closely with Green Mountain Power. They've been great, I have to throw that in there. They've been great to work with on this project to get this separated. Uh, but the college had owned the line, they had owned the transformers. So the short of it is that if there were any troubles and problems with those lines, uh, we now as the new owner, if we kept that the same, would have been, it would have been a liability for the city to have to repair and pay for the cost. So basically what's happening here is Green Mountain Power, once we're through with this changeover, will actually own the lines. So if there's any issues, any problems, we simply call up Green Mountain Power, they address it, they deal with it. Uh, but this, we're here now from where we had chatted with this so some time ago, as far as the changeover, we've got everything figured out. We've got the communication lines figured out. Uh, Kim's going to have some decent communications, uh, communication line put in in another week or so. Uh, and I know she's thrilled about that and should be, uh, desperately need it over there. But the power, we've got a date with Green Mountain Power on the twenty-sixth of this month, uh, to do the final connection. We've done all the connections we were responsible for. So basically, this is a, it's a standard agreement that Green Mountain Power requires, uh, for them to be the owners in the end, uh, for this electrical line. So, uh, but like I said, I'm happy to report that we're in great shape. Uh, we've done all our portion, we still have some to do. But, uh, Green Mountain Power's been excellent to work with on this and assist us in getting this changed over. And if there's any questions, I'm gladly, uh, answer them.
Are there any questions from members of the board? Alderman Gruza.
No, they're all talking about, uh, Bob's talking about how great they are, but we're, we're talking about fifteen thousand dollars. So is, is this the best deal there is? Is, that's why we're.
I, I believe it's actually pretty reasonable money, Sam, for, for what we're going to get here. I mean, uh, again, we, we don't inherit the liability that, that the college had, which I think is a, a big improvement. Um, and for this type of changeover, you have to include Green Mountain Power. They're kind of a single source supplier with this. It's not like we can easily bid this because this type of hookup is really, they're the only ones.
Mm-hmm. All right, thank you, Bob.
Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this something that the mayor would have to sign over, that sign on behalf of the city?
Probably be more questions, uh, for, for Matt, but I believe that's.
Matt.
Yeah, it's not set up for anybody's name right now in particular. We generally default to the mayor, but really the board could, could authorize any, anybody, um, any employee to sign, but generally we, we do authorize the mayor. And this one has not been, um, edited yet to, to include a name. So I think that's always my preference because I can handle the, um, the contract through my office, and the mayor's across the hall, and then we, but then we have a copy of it. And then, of course, we get it to, we'll, we'll get it over to Bob and to Kim as well, so they, they have a copy.
With that, I would move to suspend the rules, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. All those are in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries, go ahead.
And I would move, uh, to, um, approve the agreement between Green Mountain Power and the City of Rutland for the three-phase underground primary distribution system. Um, and have the, uh, mayor sign on behalf.
Second.
We have a motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? Right, we have motion to enter in the agreement between Green Mountain Power and the City of Rutland for the third phase, the underground electric, and to authorize the mayor to sign. With all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we have Attorney Blumer, request for referral, recommendation to formulate and adopt procedural rules of electronic meetings. These are pages seven through twenty-seven of the packet. Attorney Blumer.
Thank you. Um, so I did put together just a short, uh, memorandum. Um, I won't, I won't, uh, go, go through the whole thing again. Uh, but as you know, we, we, last meeting, um, you know, we faced, uh, an issue that wasn't completely straightforward, and I think to some extent we are trying to fit a square peg into a round hole sometimes when we're trying to apply the traditional rules that the board has used, um, you know, to the new system that we've adopted because of the pandemic. So, um, there were, there are, um, some, uh, you know, bylaw, uh, suggestions that are, that have been published by Robert's Rules. Uh, I think it was Alderman Franco who had mentioned those, uh, last meeting. Um, and so I did, I did find those, um, and I pointed out in my memo that there, the board has to actually take action to adopt those. They're not considered to be, um, part of the rules yet. So we do have, uh, in our procedure, in, in the specific procedures that the board has already adopted, um, there is a, a default to the most recent edition of Robert's Rules. Uh, but again, technically, these sample rules, um, are not part of those rules and would need to be acted on separately if the, if the board, um, wanted to use those as a, um, either the, substitute them in for purposes of the electronic meetings, or use them as a starting point. Um, and I did go, I did give a, a fairly lengthy list of, um, the considerations, I think, that would, would be beneficial to cover in, um, in whatever is, uh, discussed or drafted, just things that I remember, um, you know, kind of coming up over the past year that we more or less did our best to kind of work through, but there wasn't, um, there was not really a, a procedure or protocol, uh, that we, that we could have looked to for guidance that the board had, um, you know, kind of by, by majority decided was the way that they wanted to, um, conduct the meetings. So I know that, um, there's a, a hope that we'll get back into person, you know, maybe as soon as the next meeting. And so, you know, this, some of these may be, may be moot, but if you're thinking of, um, for some period of time, going with some kind of hybrid, um, uh, you know, meeting structure, then I think almost all of these, uh, you know, as long as we're using some sort of video conferencing software, all of these questions, um, you know, could, could and have seemed to come up. And there may be others that, um, folks can think of too, that you'd want to discuss ahead of time so that everyone is kind of on the same page, um, before they come up.
Thank you, Attorney Blumer. I have Alderman Clifford, followed by Alderman Gruza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to refer this matter to General Committee for further discussion.
Second.
We have a motion to refer, it has been seconded. Alderman Gruza, do you have a comment before we?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take my turn here too, because my question, if the city attorney knows, on August sixth, twenty twelve, what committee did this come out of? The, the rules and orders of business for the board. I don't, never, in my years before, I don't remember what committee this would have went into, and I was just curious what it, what it would have come in or out of.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I could, I could look up, um, in our historical minutes to try to find out. Um, you know, I had suggested committee of the whole, just because eventually you think you're going to want a majority of the board to be on board with, with whatever, um, the group comes up with. And I guess the committee of the whole is just another way of saying, you know, it's a, a special meeting of the board to, to deal with this particular issue as a, as a full group. But by the same token, uh, you know, someone may have an idea, or there may be others that, that are willing to volunteer, um, to do, to come up with some sort of sample draft that then the, the, the larger board or a committee could, could review, because it may take a while if it's, if you're trying to work through all of these in, um, you know, to begin with in committee, and if you don't have everybody there, then you may not have a majority to pass the whole thing. So, um, that was why I was suggesting, I know it's more work for everybody, but everyone's actually done a great job of attending the meetings, even if they're not, not on the committee. So that would still be my own recommendation, but there's no legal reason for it. It's, it's more of just, uh, what I think from, from a practical standpoint might work better.
And I won't interrupt you, but that's a really good point, because I think I almost said this earlier to you, is that these are really, really good pages, these two pages. These, like, updates to where we got to go really need to get incorporated into the twenty-twelve document. And it'd be cool to get everybody together, to be honest with you, because, uh, that's where we need to go. I, I think this covers everything, like Alderman Defoy, this covers, you know, for someone who can't be there, and, and this ability to have this, these, 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 um, um, what do you call it, meetings? You know, the E meetings, whatever. So, um, I'll support the motion to do general, and I'll do one as quick as I can this week. But, uh, I will also support if there's a, a, a motion to do, um, committee of the whole. I'm in on this, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, so Alderman Clifford.
With, uh, the, what the city attorney said, I, I will draw my motion to send to the General Committee and, uh, refer to the committee of the whole.
Second.
Our motion has been seconded, Alderman Davis.
Just a question, um, and I understand our urgency to look at it, but, um, we do have a board meeting, we have a pension meeting this Thursday, and we may have rec, depending on what happens, to get that creep path. So I would just like an opportunity to be able to read it and kind of try to figure out how we place, um, uh, rules, uh, Robert's rules to open meetings and to, uh, Zoom type of meetings. So, um, if we could at least give us a little chance to, to look at the new Robert's rules.
Thanks, Alderman Davis. Alderman Grusso.
Yeah, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman. I've, I too have a week of stuff. I've got to be in Dartmouth today in the morning too, to, and whatever, I'm gonna be on the road a lot. But, um, I'm in and, and again, thank you fellow members. I, and, and I commend you, Matt. This is, this is really awesome. And, uh, I think it's gonna be a whole new, you know, ballgame, whenever we get these incorporated in. And it gives us really modern rules and, and we won't have a lot of problems like we did last time. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Alderman Grusso. All right, so we have a motion that has been seconded to send this to committee of the whole. Is there any further discussion or debate? If not, with all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carries. All right, and since I would be the one calling that meeting, I will give attention to the fact that we have a number of committee meetings we need to have in the next two weeks. That'll also allow for us to have time to review this document. And we'll probably have to take this in bits and pieces, to be perfectly honest. It's quite a bit. Thank you, everyone. All right, Attorney Blumer, we have you up again. Settlement proposal. Um, and this was information provided to us previously in a confidential email. Uh, April twenty-third. Attorney Blumer.
Uh, yes, so I was able to provide you with the, um, settlement proposal, uh, with respect to the eighty West Street, um, tax appeal. Um, we can go into executive session to discuss pending litigation. If there's questions, um, uh, that you think, again, would be prejudicial to the city to ask in open session. Um, so if, if, uh, folks have questions, we can, um, we can go in. Or if, if people have had a chance to look at the settlement and the memo that went along with it, um, you'd also have the option to, uh, um, you know, vote on it without, without going into executive session.
Thank you, Attorney Blumer. Alderman Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to please note that I'll be abstaining from any discussion because my wife works directly for Mr. McPhee.
Thank you. That'll be noted.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, and I think the board has to weigh in. I think with the memo that, um, was provided by the city attorney, unless a board member has questions, I'm, um, comfortable suspending the rules and moving it forward without executive session. I'm seeing some heads shaking, so I'll take the leap and put a motion on the floor.
I'll second.
Suspend the rules.
All right, the motion suspended and has been seconded. Would all those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed?
Aye.
And I will move to accept the proposed settlement for the twenty-twenty tax appeal of eighty West Street.
Second.
We have a motion and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none, all the favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Motion passes and declare full vote. Change in this vote. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, we're up to reports of standing committees, of which we have none. Reports of select committees, we have Alderman DePoy. Recreation Committee, Alderman DePoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the rec committee met on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one to discuss the five hundred dollar fee assessed to the farmer's market for their summer location downtown in Depot Park in Evlin Street. The concern was whether or not the five hundred dollars that is charged in the fee is covering the costs to the city to shut down Evlin Street and prep the park each Saturday. Alderman Gillen wondered whether the costs that the year being met and Superintendent Peters was on hand to tell us that there really aren't that much in cost to the rec and that also Public Works would have to answer for themselves as to what their costs might be. Um, although Representative of Public Works was not available at the time of the meeting. Um, Alderman Davis expressed that, uh, her take was that the traffic that was brought downtown by the farmer's market was well worth the five hundred dollar fee as people also shop at other businesses downtown and it's a, um, economic vitality to the downtown in the summer months. So with that, on the motion by Alderman Davis, in a five-o vote, the committee recommends to the full board that the five hundred dollar fee be adopted again this year and be approved and unchanged and I so move.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so I have a motion that has been seconded to approve the farmer's market, uh, permit fee as the price stated, uh, five hundred dollars. Uh, Alderman Davis.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think, um, uh, and Alderman DePoy can correct me. Uh, I believe that Superintendent Peters also stated that she would cover the cost for the farmer's market and, um, asked DPW to do the same so we could get an idea, um, if there is any true negative impact on the city financially as we go forward for next year. But I do want to remind the board and, and, um, and fortunately, this will only ring to the ears of members who have sat there for a number of years that we had this conversation many years ago with, um, the two farmer's markets and other entities around the city were more than welcome to take those, that farmer's market and put it within their municipal boundaries. So, um, I just want to remind the board that we had this discussion then and I'm not sure that it's a market that we want to lose from our, um, our boundaries here in the city.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. So we have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any further discussion, debate, questions? If not, with all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 No opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Alderman DePoy.
And, Mr. President, I just want to, I just wanted to point out really quick. I think that's the shortest committee meeting I've ever been a part of. It was just over fifteen minutes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. We were very impressed. Um, we are, of which we have none. Petition letters, miscellaneous questions, we have none. Board of Control Commissioners, nothing. That brings us to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Alderman Franco.
Thank you, um, Chair. I just had a question for, uh, Attorney Blumer. I know there was a, an open question last session regarding, uh, whether Rule seven, number nine of our, uh, board rules, which states a member must vote on a question if the member is present unless there's a conflict of interest, um, whether or not that, uh, for some reason did not apply to two of the votes in which there was a perceived abstention. Um, I just wanted to follow up and give Attorney Blumer an opportunity to let us know his findings. I, I know there was a memo given to us with regard to electronic meetings, um, but I didn't hear a, an answer with regard to that open question. Um, I'm happy to move on, but I just want to have a clear understanding if we covered our bases on that question.
Uh, yeah, I didn't do too much more, um, research after, after our discussion last meeting. Um, uh, having felt like the, the chair, um, had made the decision to kind of move on and then the, the meeting adjourned, um, you know, shortly after we came out of executive session. Um, you know, going back to that idea that it is a little bit of a, um, a s- a square peg in, into a, a round hole and it's difficult to know what was, um, uh, intended by the folks in twenty-twelve or whether this, this rule may have even existed long before twenty-twelve, but that was the last time, um, these particular rules were amended. Um, the only thing that I would mention is that, and I don't, I'm not even sure that this is something that we, that we spoke about, um, uh, in executive session because we were sort of dealing with it on the fly. But one of the things that I did see in, in going back through is that in Rule twenty-six, um, which deals with secret ballot votes, um, there is, uh, you know, towards the end of the sentence, um, it says, "The vote, the votes shall be, a vote that shall be by secret ballot, um, shall be under such conditions as shall secure to each member so far as practicable the same or like rights and privileges as, as are now given under the election laws of Vermont to voters in state and city elections." And so, um, you know, generally as a, um, uh, you know, in, in legal construction, when you're looking at, um, if something isn't clear on its face and you're trying to decide, you know, how to interpret it, um, one of the canons of, 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 um, reviewing that would be, is there a rule or a, a law that is, um, more specific to the, to the, um, issue at hand? And in this case, I think it could be argued at least that the secret ballot, uh, rule is more specific, um, than the general, um, abstention rule, um, that, that exists in, I think what you said, Rule, Rule seven. Um, and as, as everyone knows, in, in, in an election here in Vermont, you do have the right to abstain completely, you know, you don't have to go to the, the polls. Um, but if you do go to the polls, you also have the ability to abstain on a particular, um, office that doesn't invalidate your, um, your ballot if you decide not to vote for mayor, but you do vote for, um, you know, Board of Aldermen, uh, and you're also allowed to undervote. So if you, if there's six, um, Board of Aldermen seats that are open, um, again, you can vote for just one, you can vote for Don, you can vote for one, you can vote for up to six. Um, so in that way, you know, this Rule twenty-six having, um, mandated that the, the secret ballots be, be done in the same, same or what, uh, provide same or like rights and privileges as are now given under the election laws of Vermont, um, then I, I think that it does cut towards, um, you know, the, the ability to abstain in, in a secret ba- secret ballot. And I know we did talk about, um, and again, this was, um, um, you know, from my point of view, when we were discussing it, um, I was approaching it from a little more of the practical side and, um, also had an opportunity to go back about the question of, um, you know, whether something could be reconsidered. Um, and per Robert's rules, you can reconsider a, um, a secret ballot vote. You basically have to take folks at their word that they, uh, were on the prevailing side, even though, even though nobody knows, you know, how, technically how everyone voted. Um, and so that was a mistake that I, uh, made as the parliamentarian last meeting, uh, that I wasn't aware that a secret ballot could be reconsidered because it didn't really make logical sense to me. But I did, did since confirm, um, that that is possible. Um, but this is, this is a little bit of a separate issue where, um, our, our rule that's specific to secret ballots, um, does mandate that it, that, that the conditions and rights and privileges be the same as a, as a normal election. So I think having looked at it a little bit more closely, that's where, where I'm at. But I'm happy to do a little bit more research if, if the board would, would, um, uh, you know, like me to do that.
Yeah, I, um, if I may, I, I just wanted to confirm that, uh, the rules, I guess that our procedural action in the prior meeting adequately covered, um, what was, you know, what the rules, uh, stipulated here. So if you feel comfortable that it, it did, um, that's the confirmation I was looking for.
Okay, yes, I, I do. Not necessarily for the reasons that we discussed last meeting, but, um, on, on review of, uh, you know, on, on a short review of, of the, the rules in more depth, um, it, that does appear to be what is, um, intended for the secret ballot votes. And again, I think this is something that would be right now that we've, um, lived through it. Um, it would be right for discussion, um, because as a board, you know, just, I think, uh, two-thirds of the board can change those, um, procedures and th- this may be something that folks wanna, um, adjust, given, given their experience.
Attorney Blumer? Is there, uh, Alderman DePoy?
Mr. President, if I may, um, Alderman Blumer, how does it remain a secret ballot if somebody comes out and says, "I was on the prevailing side and I would like to change my vote or re-vote or something like that"? I mean, that does away with, you know, that does away with it being a secret ballot at that point. And I personally have no problem with, when this goes to the, if it's general committee or wherever, or committee of the whole or whatever, but I have no problem with it being a completely open vote for any of this. I mean, our constituency should know exactly what we're voting for and who we're voting for. And I would certainly advocate for, um, a completely open voting slate on everything. But, um, you know, as far as this goes, we're not there yet. So, um, I, I just think that if you're going to say that we can, uh, revisit this or, or, um, ask for a re-vote, it's a reconsideration, it's just silly under the current rules because then people know exactly how people voted. So it's no longer a secret vote. I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Yeah, and I was surprised when I, when I did find it in Robert's rules that it was, um, that it was an option because as we, or as I said last meeting, um, it seemed a foreign concept to me that, um, you know, the confirmation of who was on the prevailing side versus the, the non-pervailing side. Um, but, but according to Robert's rules, um, you know, you would, you would just take the person at their word that they, that they were on the prevailing side and that they were, um, you know, looking to, to revisit the issue. Um, and, and it did say that obviously they would, they would have to, um, reveal how they had voted. So it would no longer be a secret, secret with respect to, um, the person who moves it and, and the person who seconds it.
Thank you, Attorney Blumer. Any, any other questions, comments, discussion around this particular issue? All right, if, oh, Alderman Franco.
Yeah, I just, oh, thank you. I just wanted to, um, uh, confirm, you know, we will be discussing this when we do the committee of the whole, um, essentially, uh, identifying how secret ballots should be approached. So I look forward to discussing it more there.
Thank you. There's nothing else on that particular issue? We are, Alderman Grusso?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is that what you're looking for, Mr. Chairman?
I, I'm almost there.
You're almost there.
We're almost there. Is any more unfinished? If there's no more unfinished business, is there any miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business to come before the board? If not, Alderman Grusso, I would love to grant you the honor.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. A motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and it has been seconded. With all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Have a great night.